A motion to approve as with the additions.
No, seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Council priorities are there. CAO, did you want to speak to these priorities?
I don't have a report. Well, who wants to say this?
Okay. Go ahead.
Just on the downtown things, I guess I can comment a little bit on that. But the, the, there's been a lot of interest in the facade improvement program. So much so that we've had, as I've indicated to council through email, we've had 28 properties identified and people come forward and say, for the most part, come forward and say, "We're interested." Where are the details? So, EKISTIC's plan was to have the details back to us in early September, so I would expect the details available next week. And the question, one of the questions they have asked though is about deadlines for people to get the work done. And given where we are in the season, we might consider extending into the springtime for people to be able to complete the work on their facades. So, when they bring forward the documents, we'll take a look at that before we put it out. That's for your information. Also, on the streetscape improvements, part of that was to actually do a survey of the street infrastructure in the areas that were identified as priority. And so that work has been completed, is in the hands of the consultant, and so that work is moving along.
Good. Thank you. Go ahead, councillor.
Since it's a nice warm place to go in, two things for the CAO. One, it came up with Communities in Bloom yesterday. Is there any hopes that we could have staff do in your infrastructure inventory where benches and garbage cans are located on Main and Water, i.e. positioned on a map? And I'll tell you, there's been some concerns about locations. It would be nice if we could really revisit that and make sure they're strategically located. We've noticed some huge gaps, and I think it would be a very easy thing since they're done every day. Anyway, they're clean. Just to make sure we have, because Yarmouth South is very short on benches and garbage cans or other areas. We have a clustering of them, and it would be nice if we could spread them out. That would be, is a bit of a concern if at all possible. And the other question for the CAO I had was regarding, where are we at with the Hawthorne, the Brown Street parking lot? I've been asked several times, like, what's happening there? Like, is, are we at any, or can we bring that up with Mr. Ernst later on, maybe? I'd like to get an update on that because that seems to be dragging on forever and a day.
Good. CAO?
Just quickly on the infrastructure items, the garage cans and the benches, I can check with Tracy and see if she has them mapped already. If she doesn't, you're right, it won't take very long to take the GPS coordinates and map those. The second item, Mr. Ernst can better address than I. He's been, and we did talk about it just yesterday, he's awaiting the, I guess, documents from the consulting engineers, the design engineers. I don't know if he has any further update than that. So, it is streetscape? It won't include the parking lot itself?
So, did, part of the EKISTICs was that the lady that was here was going to put together streetscape plan? I think she did that, or she's in the process of, go ahead.
Right. So, there were, there were, there were three things that we wanted to have done, three projects the EKISTICs is working on. One of them is streetscape improvements, and the priority areas we talked about were the intersections at Cliff and Main and John and Main, in terms of bump outs and so on. So, they're looking at that stretch of Main Street as being phase one. And so that's what has been surveyed, and that's what the original plan, the initial plan will come back as. And obviously, whatever is done there, then it would be to move it out in successive phases.
And just further to our warm and open and inviting part, your worship, a positive note, your favorite topic, Facebook. There were some issues regarding a local business, Bread and Olives, and that things were bogging down due to, quote, "town staff." For the record, town staff have absolutely nothing to do with it. It was a discussion between the new owner and the previous owners, and were not involved. So, just for the record, I did speak with the owner of the place after I heard and saw a posting, and that was erroneous. I do wish people would be more accurate, but we're at the risk of...
Was it on everyone's favorite page?
On everybody's favorite.
That's what I thought. They're going down a, anyway. Councillor McIsaac?
Yeah, thank, thank you, your worship. I had a discussion about what you just talked about, what you asked the CAO a month or so ago about benches and garbage receptacles. But for our information, just sitting around the table here, I'd ask the CEO to tell me, tell us, the same as he told me, the prices on the receptacles, what they cost, what we're using in the town of Yarmouth, what they cost per unit. I think it was in the thousands of dollars, if I'm not mistaken. So, it's easy, it's easy to ask, but it has to have like a long-term plan and budget to put these in place. There's always room for receptacles, but on vacation this summer, in U.S., in New Hampshire, to be precise, a lot of the federal parks have a sign, what, as you're going in, on a lot of places in their parks. And the sign says, "What you bring out, what you bring in, you take out." And you'd be surprised how neat and clean that these parks and all these federal facilities are. I mean, there's nothing there, nothing at all. And if we live by that standard in our parks and our facilities that we own, we'd be better off. We'd have more money to put in for more, more facilities and more things that are needed, except receptacles. But anyway, if you could just give us a breakdown on, on the price of receptacles, and if you can't do it today, perhaps send us out an email so we all would know. And that way, like I say, it's an easy ask, but it's quite, I was taken back when you told me, and I said, "It costs in the thousands of dollars for three or four."
Yeah. We, we buy stuff that's designed for, for public use, and it does cost many multiples more than the stuff that, benches and so on, that you might see at your local hardware store for, for personal use. So, we have recently gathered some pricing on that for requests to other levels of government to participate, so I'll share that information with council.
I have a friend also that works for the city of Portland, and in the conversation about what I just had mentioned, he said, "We have," and you've probably seen him in your, in your brochure, your book, from the FCM, that they promote these stuff, they're run by Solar. You can compact them, you pack them down, pack down, pack down. Just for one of them receptacles is over $10,000 U.S. I mean, it's just unbelievable, right? I mean, it's just, their price goes way out. Anyway, just for our information.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. My apologies, I was behind the eighth and ninth ball when you asked for additions. I do have something that, just some FYI, some information that I would like to share with everyone. I don't know where to add it. This is in response to emails that we've been receiving with regards to music on Main Street.
Oh. Okay. So, let me put that under ten F.
Thank you.
What's the, just, just for timing's sake, should he stay? Because it's right here.
We should deal with it.
Okay. All right. Okay. We, oh, sorry councillor, go ahead.
Your worship, just further to what councillor McIsaac's comment, as you know, the town council was given a draft of the community asset donation program, and that did come up in Communities in Bloom yesterday, and we're now in the final stages of revising, hoping to get a council within the next couple of meetings. But that will probably address some of the cost concerns that councillor McIsaac, because I can actually see some corporate entities getting involved. I mean, whether you're donating $1,000 for a nice garbage receptacle is, you know, something that's good promotion as well, so anything to keep our town green. So, I think you're going to see, once we get that donation asset program in place, I think that's going to be a very positive step to help alleviate some of the problems.
Good. Okay. CAO report. Go ahead.
Your worship, I was off on vacation for two weeks, and so this is, once again, coming to you in hard copy on your desk. I've tried to update it. What I do for my report, just so everyone understands how this is generated, the motions of council are basically my report. So, they are direction to staff, and I'm your staff member, so I take those motions, and I try to give you a progress report on those motions on a monthly basis. This month, I'll confess that I haven't had as much time to go back through this and, and double-check my, you know, the status of all the items, but certainly the newer items I was able to get to and put those in a reasonable place in terms of where they are towards being completed. So, it's there for your information, available for questions now or at any time in the future.
Thank you. Any questions for the CAO? Fire department report. How you doing, chief?
Well, reports passed. Any questions? Are you the only director of order, acting for your, 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 your question?
I'd like to know how, how the fire day went. Did you have any success in recruiting, I guess is my big question?
Appreciate it very well.
Great.
It did very well for us also. We handed out approximately seventeen applications for Monday, and it was all around the town. It was probably around sixty applications.
Excellent.
If you get thirty, if you get fifty percent of the applications in, it'll be good.
That's great news.
And if you get in next year, we're in like a team.
Yeah.
And then plus the mayor would be on.
Yeah, the mayor missed the Duncan booth. I think you need the deputy mayor to be in the Duncan booth next year, just saying. Thank you, chief. Any questions? Forehead? Good. Thank you. Planning department. CAO, you want to update us? We've got good news here.
Yes, we do. I advised council earlier this morning that we have been successful in contracting a new director of planning and development, Caroline King. Caroline will join us on October the 6th, and perhaps even a couple of days before, we'll see. But we're very pleased with, with being able to reach an agreement with her to take on that responsibility, very excited about the future.
Good. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I have a quick question. It's not going to take long. Just jog my memory, please. Has to do with sandwich boards. Is there a restriction on, on the number of sandwich boards that can be displayed out in front of a store, on, on the sidewalk on Main Street, or anywhere?
It's where. Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, there are restrictions on signage boards, not only where they get placed or how many, but how big. We do have some restrictions on those. If anybody's, that's the work of the development officer, so if somebody wants to put a signage board, they require a development permit, they're free. But what that permit does is, if you, if you come in, you apply for the permit before you get your sign made, you can be, you will be made aware of all of the rules related to where they can be and how they, how big they can be and so on. I always encourage people to come, come to the department first before you spend money because unfortunately, sometimes people don't realize that there are rules around that stuff, and sometimes they have to go back and spend more money to comply with the rules. So, Joanne Earl is the development officer, and that's, that's her bailiwick.
Thank you.
Operational services. You're up. Anything? Any questions for our engineer? Go ahead.
Your worship, and a question to David, and I'm not sure where we stand with this. The exit from the ferry terminal, that's the road that goes out on Water Street, is basically reminiscent of the lunar landscape on the moon. It's not really a very warm and fuzzy with people going out. It's really, it's, the pavement is pretty well shot there. Is that our property? Is that the responsibility of the terminal? Because I did get a couple of complaints this morning on my walk, was nailed on that, saying this is a terrible greeting for people coming off the boat. It does look pretty rugged.
Actually looks like property owner's responsibility.
So, are we the property owner, or? Oh, okay.
So, it's on, if this helps at all. It's on, it's on Public Works list.
Could, could it be done sooner than later?
It's on his list, yeah.
Because it is eroding quite badly. Basically, the, you're now at dirt level, from what I could see this morning down there. So, it's, it'd be nice if we could maybe gussy that up a little bit. It's a shame when people get off the boat and they're, and I'm thinking mainly of people with sports cars and low cars that drag things.
Good. Want us to leave that with you, or? I, I know that it's, it's on his list to do.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, yeah. I think...
The past three is almost, it's starting to get back.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Good. Councillor? Councillor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. I was less than that, I forgot the question I was going to ask, believe it or not. On the, the tender for the, for the work at the treatment plant, has that been let, the pipe that's, the outflowing pipe, is that contract been let yet?
It hasn't been awarded yet.
Hasn't been awarded, no? Is, it's out there for, when does that close?
It's closed now.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
And when, when do the, when do you open the tenders?
Uh, I don't, last week, I think it was. I don't remember now.
Okay. And there's a reason why I'm asking. And the reason is because the pipe is floating, as you're probably aware of. And I've been looking at it for the last couple of weeks, and I says, "There's something different out there." And I looked, and I see seagulls sitting on, on places where there was no places before. So, anyway, I, I called Jeff, and Jeff did contact you and say that it was, come, come from. It's, it's unconnected. So, it is, it is floating. So, that's, that's, that's a concern, I'm sure, to you, so.
Yeah.
So, it'll, it'll be let pretty soon then, I would think.
Hopefully, it will, yes.
Okay. Did you have good tenders?
They came in quite high.
Quite high. So, that's, that's, that's why you're kind of smiling. Okay, so, but there is a bit more work, I would think, a lot more work compared to what was, was that the tender? Did we know that, that that pipe was flown before we put the tender out? Oh, we did?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. Dave, we had the conversation the other day with Rodney when we're in the back office here, and we're talking about Upper Vancouver Street, just going around the corner to the Grove Road, about the grass on this side of the sidewalk closest to the road. And yourself and Rodney said that we take care of it, but is actually the hospital's responsibility?
Yes, that's correct. It's property owner that fronts on that, that's responsible.
So, I'm just, okay, I'm going to ask a question to the CAO. I've had several concerns, and it was brought up by Jerry Teagan, or Tean, from the Communities in Bloom about, about the grass on that side of the street. Now, should, how do we have a conversation with the people at the hospital?
Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you. The, the section you're talking about is the new sidewalk section?
It would be between, it would be, yeah, yeah, in front of where they blocked off going to the Grove Road.
Yeah. We had another situation just like this, where a new sidewalk was put, just recently this summer, where a new sidewalk was put in, and the adjacent property owner wasn't aware of their responsibilities. A simple email solved it. So, with this information, we'll send the hospital a, a, an email and ask them, make them aware of their, of their responsibility with that, and I would expect that would handle it. They have people who do grass maintenance, it's, it's not a large area to add to their...
No, it wouldn't be more than 50 or 60 yards, I wouldn't think.
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll just make them aware, and hopefully that will handle it.
Yeah. And in the same conversation, now, councillor Lanzel might be interested in this one, in the same conversation with the person talking about the grass along Vancouver Street, they live a little farther down the Grove Road, and they were wondering, and I know there's a couple of small pipes that come off our water system that go down the Grove Road, they were wondering if the water utility at the town of Yarmouth was ever considering put, putting water a little farther down the Grove Road. I know the houses are quite closely clustered, so I don't know what the cost of that would be, but has that ever been a conversation or consideration down there? Because isn't there two pipes that run down to maybe one of the seniors' homes a little farther on the left? Like a one-inch pipe, I heard?
Yeah, there's small diameter poly pipe that runs down the road there, further off the end of the existing water main.
Are those meters?
Yep. They're all metered.
Okay. But has there ever been a consideration, Dave, or how expensive is it for?
I, I don't recall what the cost would be. I can price it out, but I mean, it's not, not a cheap project.
Okay. And that, the person just had the, the question, because I know, I think, on the right-hand side, some of the water, some of the wells have been quite sandy or silty, and there's been a problem there. So, he just wondered if it was ever on the, on the town's radar, and maybe if...
Is that beyond the town boundary?
That would be on the town boundaries.
Yeah, well...
Because we only go to probably, how far past the, the entrance to the old toddler be? We don't go that far, do we? For, for the boundary, Jeff? For the boundary, for the town limits, we don't go that far past the hospital driveway or the old, one property beyond that? Okay. And, but on the opposite side of the street, that's all in the municipality, right? Even though it's...
Yes.
Okay. Like where...
It's down the center of the road, as far as I know. About, Dave? How about the center of the road?
I don't know if it's the center of the road or the right-hand side of the road, but that's municipal.
Yeah, on the other side, okay. That's just a concern, just a, I was just wondering.
He asked a question, so I might have an answer for him.
Good.
I think councillor Lanzel might have, chair of the water utility might have an answer.
I think councillor Mooney got a good point. I, I'd like to see us do a costing on that. I've had a similar inquiry, and there is some talk, there's some fairly nice homes in that area. We do service Hebron, Dayton, and that area as well. Maybe it's something we can look at down the road, and it might be worthwhile to, for the utility, to look at the cost of it. So, maybe if Mr. Ernst could look at that, that would be, I think, in order. Don't think we need to, I'll put a motion in the books, what the heck. I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff just to investigate estimates on the cost of extending water service into the, the Grove Road area, and to make a very small, inexpensive presentation to council on it, some future date.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Carried? Are you wondering? Because, okay. You're all set.
Well, yeah, just what I'm wondering is, is this really, I know the utility's a separate corporation than, than the town, but it is also in a separate municipality, and I, I don't know, you know, I, I haven't had any experience before where we've, where we've gone ahead and serviced a new area outside of when we replaced the, the old transmission line. That resulted in some new areas being serviced. But would it, would we normally approach the municipality on that issue? There, you know, whether or not they want that? Because it, ultimately, what it does is it, is it, it increases, it improves the value of properties in that area and the developability, the density that can be developed there. They may have real interest in, in having that done, or interest in not having it done for other reasons, so.
And CAO brought, CAO's got a good point. We don't have fire hydrants, obviously, in that area now, do we?
I don't think so.
There's no fire protection, I think, beyond there. I don't remember seeing any. I know there's one just at the end, but there's, but, and I agree with the CAO, that's why I kind of left it as a very, some future date, it's something to look at the variables. I, I'm always looking for customers, and I think we should be looking for customers if we can do it, but you're quite right, it's to be municipal sharing, and yes, by all means to start providing a service would be a plus in many regards, and we don't know what the, the future holds. Plus, we do own property there as well, so it does help the value. I mean, if it's like a, suddenly a multimillion-dollar project, duh, we're not going to go there. And you're quite right, the utility's a separate corporation, so maybe the motion for rhetoric should be to recommend to the water utility to direct staff, and then let the water, let Mr. Ernst do his thing, because we are the utility too, but this isn't a utility meeting. So, for semantics, if the mover would agree, I second it, we'll just change the wording in there to recommend to the water utility that staff, blah, 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 and that they can present it at some future meeting of the water utility.
Okay, you're good with that? You're good with that? Okay, we need to still, we're going to still vote on it as, with the changes?
No, we don't, we're all...
We're good?
We're good, yeah.
Anyone disagree? Okay. Yeah, I know, but it was the same conversation. Okay. Councillor Dennis?
To the treatment plant? We had a letter from a local contractor on that, and he wanted to pick up a package for that. Was that picked up by him?
No, he didn't come in and pick it up.
Yep.
He's, he emailed me and said he would be in to pick it up, so I never saw him, so...
Okay. Thank you.
CAO?
Yeah. On that, I've, I talked to the engineer about that, that question, that issue, and it was clear that he, he indicated and intended to take a package, and he would have been given a package. He did seek some legal advice, and, and the information I got yesterday was the advice from his lawyer came late and didn't give him enough time to then, to, I guess, fill out the package, so he left it. But it was, it was done through an invited tender, and his issue was, why wasn't he invited? Well, you know, in fact, if he had come and gotten the package and filled it out, his tender would have been considered. If he, if he wasn't low bid, then there's, there's no issue at all. If he was low bid, there might have been a question of whether or not he was qualified to do it, and that's, that's a whole separate question. But in any case, there was no, there was no bid submitted, so there's no, there's nothing for us to consider on that.
Anything else for the engineer? Thanks, Dave. Finance department. What you got for us, Jerry?
I guess just a quick update on the new financial system, is that we've got all the, I'll call them the front-end pieces, working pretty well. Of course, every time you run a water bill or run tax bills, there's little curves that get thrown at you, but we've worked through all that stuff. So, now, we've moved on, and we're working on the, what I'll call the backend stuff, is where Sybil and I do the work of putting together financial reports. So, we've got some reports done for waterfront, for the waste park, and we're currently working on like the water utility in the town. So, hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have some financial statements and updates for you that way.
Good. Thank you. Councillor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. Jerry, my question is always, do we have any money? And do we have, do we have lots of money in capital, and do we have any, lots of money in surplus? I've been reading the emails, I've been flying back and forth of big wish lists, wish lists on, on different things that are going on in town. His tender is going to be way over. Everything runs with money.
Yep.
We're having a meeting tonight, we're having, everything's going to be happening this week on transit and stuff. Do we have money?
There's been nothing that's, like I say, I do review some larger accounts, just to make sure we're staying in the budget. We've been following along budget pretty well. Nothing's jumped out that I've seen. When I get into the details of financial statements, I review some of the, I review more accounts, but on our main accounts, we seem to be following along with budget. And like I say, our tax bills went out there last week, so people are coming in and paying their bills already, so I think on the revenue side, we're right on budget as well so far, so. Like I say, I'll have, I'll have a better indication in a few weeks, but like, nothing's come, come out of the woodwork.
So, there's nothing really to be...
We have money set aside, we have the capital budget, so we have that money to spend, so how that's divvied up in the end will be the challenge.
Okay. Great.
Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. My question's to the Director of Finance. How long have we had this new accounting system? It's called Town Suite.
Town Suite, it was mid-April's when we went live with it.
Oh, yeah, and...
So we've done, just last week would have been our fourth water bill and each water bill's been a bit different, I'll say, but we're, we think we're done now. We've got everything worked out there. We've done both tax billings on it, so our tax billing piece seems to work, worked well. And like I say, we're paying all our bills and taking all our payments with it, so that's all kind of the front-end piece that I say seems to be working fairly well now, pretty straightforward.
Okay, good, thank you. That's what I was going to ask. Is it working out? Is it working as well as you expected and also as well as our sister municipalities who've had experience with it for some time now? As good as they said it was?
Yeah, that's, that's the next step that I see, is that some little more, I guess, information sharing with our sister municipalities that use the same system. Our staff has basically been learning what it can do, what it can't do, and they're still learning things that it can do at this point, but like I say, we can, we can do all the basics now, so that's the big piece.
Good, as long as you're happy with it.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilor Mooney?
Yeah, just one quick question to Jerry and I see we have Mike Randall here, but I'd just like to know, Jerry, if we could get a breakdown, I don't know, every three months of the deed transfer tax, because it looks like there's been more properties that have sold over the last several months than over the last couple of years, so I'm just wondering if, if you saw an increase in that or is that something that's been on your radar at all?
That's a little higher than budget, but it wasn't great that I remember, but I mean, I can do a quick, quick review on that for you.
Yeah, and can you just do a comparable maybe to the last couple of years, just to see?
Yep, and I'll just do that in a quick email and send it out to all council. Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the finance? Good, thanks, Jerry. Yarmouth Recreation. Hello, Frank?
Hello. Very busy summer for Yarmouth Recreation. I guess this one's for Councilman McIsaac. We're six months through our budget and we've brought in about 70% of our expected revenues for the year so far, but we know that summertime is the busiest time for our department, so the other 30% should be very easily reached and our expenses are right around 45% spent, so pretty much right on track budget-wise. Just a couple of things as we head into fall and winter. Our municipal physical activity strategy that our active living coordinator, Maura Carter, has been working on, is almost ready and we're hoping that we can get on council's agenda in October to present that, that strategy for council's approval. And she's been already looking at a lot of the feedback and survey comments and implementing a lot of that strategy already in the work that she's been doing with us for about 18 months now that she's been with us, so that's moving along well. Our facilities are, we're doing a little bit of repairs at Gateway Park and St. Ambrose Fields here in town. I guess it's more some, some maintenance that we have to do every couple of years. In the ball field, there's a little bit of lip area from where the infield meets the outfield, and so we've closed those fields for September so that John Darcy and his crews can get on there and with some heavy equipment and make some repairs. As we know, we've got a big national tournament here in Yarmouth next year and we'll probably have 30-plus ball teams from all over the country here, so some improvements being done there. Our fall and winter programs will be kicking into full swing. We've got a 40-plus cycling, 40-plus women's cycling group that is starting up. We're doing a little kickoff brunch on Saturday. I think we've got 11 women signed up for that already.
Can you go if you're 39?
Of course. No, it's 40-plus, but we don't, we don't check ID.
[laughing]
38 for you, too.
Okay, thanks.
And Misty, Misty Doucette, our program coordinator, she's been doing some tumble bugs in the park, which is a relatively new thing. Both Misty and Maura have been trained as tumble bugs instructors and that's basically low-impact gymnastics for toddlers. So she's been doing tumble bugs in the park, in various parks around the county, and so far, so good. She had a session yesterday at Johns Cove Beach and I think she only had five children come out, it was kind of iffy weather day, and three of the five were from the District of Clare. So it was kind of, kind of neat that they caught wind that we were doing those things. So one of the things from the summer, with our very busy summer, we had many daily programs happening. We had a new youth active leadership program where we had an daily average of 13 youth taking part in outdoor recreation activities and also helping out with our other daily programs, whether it would be the programs at Milo with sailing and canoe kayak, or our Summer Fund Day Camp at Arcadia School, our sports camp at Maple Grove, our basketball camp at the high school, Yarmouth South Playground Program. Those youth ages 13 to 15 were helping out when, on busy days, on travel days, when we're at beach days, when we're at movie days, so we're hoping that those youth will gain some valuable experience in dealing with children and hopefully, when it comes time, that they apply for summer jobs that, you know, they'll have their, they won't be so wet behind the ears when they're, when they're looking, so it's, this program was funded by the Office of Health and Wellness. We're not anticipating future funding for it. We will apply, of course, but that's something that we want to continue on because we had a great partnership with Natural Resources and home base for that group was at Ellenwood Park and they built a new kiosk building at Ellenwood Park and basically let us have full reign of that building all summer, so it was our home base, no fees. Deanna Nos, one of the park technicians, was heavily involved with different things from fishing to outdoor wilderness training, all kinds of neat things. So it's something that's new this summer and based on our evaluation, it's something that we want to continue for the future, so. We don't stop working at the Rec Department. We are working into the fall and winter and we'll probably in the third, by the third week in September, once school gets in and we get supervisors hired and meet with principals, we'll be booking school gyms and minor basketball will start up and indoor soccer programs and drop-in youth nights and opportunities for people to call and book gyms for different activities will be happening, so.
You make it, thank you for that. You make it so easy when someone says, there's just nothing for kids. You make it so easy to say, let me show you the list, because you hit everything. You hit everything, you know?
Well, that's, you know...
It's great.
Jeff Gachew had asked us earlier in the year, he wanted us to come up with 200 things for people to do and I don't think we hit 200, but we had quite a few different things that people can do and, on their own time, without waiting for us to put on a program, so...
Perfect. Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Councilor Landry?
Yeah, just a little sidebar, too, in case some of the councilors are asked, the Mayflower award ceremony that we do every year in recognizing gardeners for the town and county, this year, in discussions with Frank, we've decided to revamp the whole program, so we're partnering through Communities in Bloom with Recreation and we had a joint meeting yesterday with Frank and Misty with our committee, and over the next few months, we are revamping the whole Mayflower Awards for the town and county to add some new categories to change the whole format with the plan of hosting a ceremony, but a little bit different angle to it next fall, so there will not be any Mayflower Awards this year, simply because we want to really change things. We're finding that it just needs a little bit of oomph, so we want to really revamp the program over, over the next few months, so we're working with not only Frank's group, but we're working with number of the garden clubs and different groups to really come in with a really nice program that recognizes as many as we can. The difficulty we're finding in the past is, I know Councilor Dennis, who sits on the committee with, with Councilor Mooney, we're finding the same people tend to be recognized every year and we're finding that a lot of the really beautiful gardens and beautiful efforts are not being recognized because people don't know they exist or the people are very humble, so we're going to really make an effort of dragging them out, so it's going to be a real concerted effort and I think council will be very impressed come spring when we unveil the new program and I'm looking very excited to work with Frank on it, so just to give council an update in case you're asked.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just, just one more addition to that. One of the ideas that I thought was a great idea is that we always have a hard time getting nominations for properties, so someone suggested that perhaps we get the councils involved and get the councilors maybe to nominate two properties that they know of for Mayflower Awards, so just early warning, get your thinking caps on, so that we'll be bugging for a couple properties and probably in late summer next year.
Perfect. Thanks, Frank, very much. Councilor Dawes, sorry?
Frank, hold on, hold on, hold on. Sorry. Actually, it's going to be quick, you don't have to sit down. I was going to ask you what, what, when is this going to be? When is the, when's the deadline to submit properties? Because I had sent, I'd already sent in a, an email nominating, nominating a property and I didn't hear anything back and I thought, well, maybe it's too late? I don't know.
Who did you send the email to?
Eh, to...
Gail, Misty?
Gail.
Gail?
I think it was Gail.
Okay, I'll check with her.
And it was about, I could go back, I could go back and check. It was a good month ago, month, month and a half ago.
I'll check on that and we'll definitely notify, notify them of the plans, but Councilor Landry volunteered to contact Carla Allen to do a little story, just in case there are other, others wondering what's happening with the Mayflowers.
Great, okay, thank you. Thanks.
I tried.
Don't, don't run off, don't run off, Frank, because the next, next thing on our agenda is, as you, as you well know, that we're, that there, know that there is a, going to be a new elementary school in Yarmouth, Yarmouth County.
I saw that on the agenda, so I guess I'll be here for that.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering what the process, this with Stevie started, because they give two examples here, Frank, is they enlarged the size of the gymnasium in Shelburne Regional High School for a community enhancement project and the next one, the town and municipality of Digby provided funds towards a community enhancement theater for Digby High School. So that's going to be a conversation we're probably going to have with several groups, but is there anything that you can think of, Frank, in your role as our Leasur Services Director, that could be included in an elementary school enhancement program? And you don't have to answer that right now, but if it's something you can think about, but I think this process with Mr. Stoddard is going to be probably fairly fast-paced, I would think, but is there anything off the top of your head that you could think of?
A couple of things. Because it is an elementary school, the gymnasium that they build for elementary schools are usually smaller than they build for high schools, so that could be a consideration there.
If...
If we wanted to get involved with an enhancement project, perhaps a larger gymnasium could be built and the way I look at it is if it's maybe adjacent to the size that can hold two full-size volleyball courts, because volleyball is a very popular gym, gym type of activity.
What about the old high school, Frank? Can that hold two? No, that's not big enough?
No. And the other, the other thing I was thinking of is basically a banquet room that could house a function of 200 to 300 people, so perhaps there could be some way of wherever the cafeteria space is planned for the new school, that that could be enhanced so that it could be a public space for a function of a couple hundred people. We have many halls and that sort of thing around, but I think since the fire hall, the banquet hall has been closed, that's one space that we've missed in the area, a public space that can house a banquet or some sort of a function and easily fit 200 or 300 people in. So those are a couple of things that I was thinking of. Obviously, we've got the old junior high and the gymnasium already there, so depending on where the site is picked, there's some talks if the, if the school does go to the, to that site, that they would be able to retain the gymnasium that is already there, which is a larger gym than, than what they would get in a, in an elementary school.
How is their gymnasium capacity?
It's a, it's a full-size, it's a full-size basketball court, gym...
I mean, I mean for, I mean for you, for scheduling and for, for getting people in gyms to run programs and do other activities. Do you have a problem or do you have a lack of gyms?
We, we don't have a lack of gym space. The problem with, we only have four of the local schools that we have gymnasium access and the problem is everyone wants to be in Maple Grove and Meadowfields. No one wants to go to Carleton or Port Maitland, so we have those gyms that are available, but it's too, people are talented, it's too far to go, so...
Something else, if you think of anything else, maybe we might have to have, this probably might have to be a whole different session than what we have time for today. Thank you, Frank.
Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Are you thinking along the lines of a cafeteria?
For enhancing the size or, or what do you mean?
For, for these functions in, in schools?
I'm not sure if I know... I'm not sure if I know what you mean.
Schools, we used to, schools that we all went to, we used to have cafeterias, we used to have auditoriums, we used to have gyms, some of us had swimming pools, but...
She heard of the school in the area?
Of the, [laughing] no, I didn't. But those are being scaled down now, they're, schools aren't, aren't being built with auditoriums anymore with these social, social rooms and stages and seating, et cetera, so now schools are being built with cafeteriums, so that cafeteria serves as a cafeteria during, during meal times and then at other times, it's a, it's a social gathering place, it's like an auditorium and it's...
So that's kind of what I, what I was...
Two to three in one.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking, because they informed us that cafeterias generally are built smaller so that they, if it's a P to six school, that P to threes use the cafeteria at one period and then four to six the other period.
Yes, yeah.
So what I was thinking is that if we were looking at, you know, there is a need for a larger public space, that that could be an idea that, you know, could be a community enhancement, that you make that space a bit bigger so that if we're having Mayflower Awards or volunteer banquets or the New Year's levy, that if we do need a larger common space, then that could be a possibility. Seniors activities, whatever.
Good. Councilor Landry?
Yeah, just further to, that twigs a little question, more for the CAO. Our council has gone on record supporting one of the sites for the elementary school, i.e. the one in center of town. Question one, has the letter been sent to the minister and carbon copied Mr. Churchill? And my second question is to the mayor, has there been any meetings with the minister, Karen Casey, to more or less lobby our desire to have it located in center of town, because that was, it's a hu, very important issue. It's a passionate issue for many of us and parents in this community, because the last thing we want is our kids bust out of town to another school. Already, we're losing our kids out of town and we don't want to see that happen again, so I'm just, those are my two questions.
CAO?
There was a letter sent and I believe the response was that the, at the time, the decision has already been made that there would be a site selection committee struck and follow the normal protocol. The local board had, had asked the minister to forego that process and just go with the single recommended site. So the process is underway and I'm a member of the, of the committee that will make a recommendation to the board, the school board. They will then, sorry, three sites will be recommended to the school board. The school board will then pass those on to, to the minister. TPW, Transportation Public Works, or whatever it's called now, will, will review those sites for their criteria and ultimately, staff will make a recommendation to the minister. The minister ultimately makes the decision. So that process is underway and I believe we're expected to be done in the next month or so, Frank?
I think the next, I think the next meeting will probably wrap up our committee work.
So the work of, the work of the local committee, I mean, to be quite honest about it, is, is we're, we're to come up with three sites. The one in, in center of town is, is one that everyone acknowledges is, is probably going to be one of those three. The Arcadia School site is the only existing site that has the land mass to qualify and part of the policy is that you have to submit one of the existing sites as one of the sites, so that's two out of three right there. So the job of the committee is really to identify a third site and not to prioritize them necessarily, just simply to make three recommendations, so it's not, it's not the most onerous task a committee could be faced with, so. And of course, there's a limited geography in which it has to fit and a, and a minimum size that land mass has to be, so that also limits the possibilities.
Okay.
So just in my senior moments, number one, you're telling me that the site selection that we're looking for, i.e. center of town, that does have the necessary geographical function that's involved in this geographical area, because if there's anything else the town needs to do, that's critical. And secondly, the letter was sent, though, supporting the center school.
Yes.
And the question, the mayor...
Conversations.
Yeah, and because I...
Conversations happen.
Good, because that's something that I think we have to really, I think we have to be very proactive and make sure that our, our case is well, is well heard on that one, because it's critical.
Good. Okay, thank you, Frank. Presentation. Thank you for your patience. Yarmouth Dog Society, if you'd like to come up and, and tell us who you are and you have 10 minutes to, to present, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilors, town staff. Seated beside me is Tanya Crosby. I am Paul Trask. Most of you do know me through various committees and other presentations. We represent the Yarmouth Dog Society. The Yarmouth Dog Society includes Ralph Alexander Ward, Katrina White, Connor Adams, Jarrett Devoo, and Andy White. We are a nonprofit volunteer group that has come together to pursue the following goals: create safe and well-maintained enclosed, i.e.... create a safe and well-maintained enclosed, i.e. fenced, off-leash environment where canines, their owners, and friends get socialized, trained, and exercised; provide the opportunity to improve a dog's behavior by socializing with other, with others while providing a safe location for recreation within our community; to raise funds to establish and maintain a park so it will not be a financial burden to local governments. And that would be done through fundraising with some support of Community's Bloom as well as the community asset donation program that's upcoming. We organized ourselves with a mission to locate an off-leash dog park within the town of Yarmouth. We secured a temporary location, the former Kemp Street Ball Field, through talking with Mr. Grant as well as the Archdiocese, we obtained permission from them, they are the registered landowners. We could, we could lose that at any day, we're waiting for the sold sign to go up and the fence to come out and it's gone. Therefore, we have nowhere else in the community that we can exercise our dogs. We began meeting to discuss ideas, locations, possibilities with the assistance of Mr. Grant of the Recreation Department. We acquired a map of the town of Yarmouth and properties that the town owns. Our members attended each location taking pictures, walking the properties, and assessing their merit as a dog park. We have narrowed the search down to three potential locations. First, the former Ball Field located behind the hospital. There are some problems with that location, i.e. access. You have to have some kind of agreement to be able to get access to it and then the construction of the access to get down to the ballpark. The east side of Water Street between Bernard Street and Moody's Lane, which would require a little ground maintenance and leveling, and Rotary Park, which is the southwest corner of Pleasant Street and Prospect Streets. We did meet with Rotary Park, Rotary, we did make a presentation to them and we're waiting to hear back from them as well. We're presenting to you today with the intent of acquiring a location to locate the dog park.
So.
I'll turn it over to Tanya and while she's doing that, I do have handouts for basically some of the rules and the various locations.
So, so we have this with the background and is this the same thing?
That's the background, but I don't think they include the rules.
Okay, they have, we have the option one, two, and three.
Just buying the location.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So with what Paul had mentioned, I've actually, I'm gonna break down the budgets for each of these areas that we've looked at. First, I'll start with the Ball Field behind the hospital. We've looked at that and we figure it's gonna cost about $73,900. That's not including the parking, it's not including access, power, water, or the unknown. The breakdown of that would be the fence for $25,000, accessories, which would be our garbage cans, our benches, shelter, information stations, $23,900. A shelter just for the dogs is about $10,000 and the landscaping, we've averaged $20,000. There's quite a bit of ankle breakers there, that would have to be fixed up. The second location would be the Water Street location and that one there is $63,900. The difference from that one is just the landscaping, it's dropped down from $20,000 to $10,000, which makes up that difference. And Rotary Park would be a grand total of $53,900. This one here is basically ready to go, you just gotta fence it in, there's really no landscaping that needs to be done there. We do have come up with some potential rules for an area. One would be enter at your own risk, no children under the age of 12 unless supervised by a legal guardian and that came up with the Kemp Street location. We had quite many problems with kids coming in and then of course, if 90-pound dog knocks over a kid, doesn't take long for someone to get hurt and so we wanna take care of that up front. Clean up after your dog, use plastic bags, put that in the garbage can right away. Remove dog at first sign of aggression, that there is in with the bylaws, you shouldn't have an aggressive dog out anyway, but the bylaws would also have to be looked at to incorporate that with the park. Dog handlers must be 18 years of age or older and that's for legal responsibilities. No food, including dog treats, allowed in the park and that would be simply because of food aggression, allergies, things like that. No sick dogs, dogs in heat, and closely monitor unneutered males. And there's a few more, if you keep going down, park would be closed from dusk till dawn for security purposes and also allowing for surveillance for that area. Like Paul said, we don't intend to come and ask for any money, we are hoping to fundraise the entire amount of what it would take. The biggest thing is if we went with the hospital, that one's kind of, it's hard to fundraise for that amount of money, especially when you start looking at the access and the parking and things like that and that's one of the big negatives there's. It's quite a bit to get it going, but it would be a, a great place. You wouldn't have to move, it's.
Jeff, can I, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jeff with the CAO. We don't own that property behind the hospital, do we?
No.
No.
That's the hospital foundation.
Okay, okay.
We were led to believe that it was owned by the town or under the town.
No, no.
That's out.
So that's out, it was out anyway because of monetary restrictions.
So, yeah, from us, I mean, yes, I mean, you can ask them. Counselor Landry, do you wanna ask a question now?
Well, yeah, just further to Counselor Mooney's comment, the, the land is under the hospital foundation, but I believe Counselor Mooney, you are on the hospital foundation so that. You're on the Villa Foundation, but, oh yeah, yeah, sorry, but I knew you were on some foundation hitting me up for money, I wasn't sure which one.
There's a chair right there.
There's a chair, so there you go, we got the chair, Mr. Barrow, right here. I knew we had some connection here. It is a hunk of land, but I don't, maybe to Greg, I know you can't comment on behalf of your board, but I mean, a request to the hospital foundation, if it was a viable issue, that would be something you would entertain, I would assume, would you Greg?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, I, I think its current use is, they might have a few softball games there at the hospital stuff, I don't think it's greatly used.
Okay. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm interested in your rule number five, you said dog handlers must be 18 years of age or older. Why did you choose that age please, I'd be interested to know?
That's when you're legally responsible.
Okay, alright.
As opposed to 16, it's kinda iffy, you're still under young offenders.
Yes.
18, you can still come under young offenders, but you would be, at 18, you'd be legally responsible for your actions.
Yes, you are. The reason that I'm asking that is, I had brought that age up when it came to our dog bylaw here, our, our town dog bylaw. And I had hoped for, for age 18, but the town, everyone agreed with age 16 and I, I believed in.
I could see that to own a dog.
Yes.
But to own a dog, you're not necessarily.
But you handle it and take it out in public.
You're, you're not necessarily taking it out in public. That dog could sit in your backyard, that dog could be in your house.
Yes.
We also put in there that you can only have as many dogs as you can control.
With a maximum of three.
With a maximum of three.
Yes.
So you're not getting somebody with 10 dogs walking in all on one leash and trying to control them. With the bylaws, they're going to have to be rearranged as well to actually create this space, because right now, under the bylaws, you can't have a dog off-leash anywhere within the town of Yarmouth, other than your own property.
Thank you.
Good, go ahead.
Your Worship, I wanna thank them for making the presentation. When I was, three of the longest weeks of my life this summer in Truro at this absolutely incredible course, the, I did walk by every day the Truro Dog Park and they have an amazing dog park, which is interesting, it's actually attached to the side of a, a baseball field, which is really neat because on one hand, the, the kids were playing baseball, but then on the other hand, parents were with the dog and kids at the same time, it was kind of nice. And they have an amazing park with, not only is it just a flat area, but it had a lot of shrubs, they had a lot of bushes, it was nicely done, it was well constructed. And dog parks are popping up in a lot of municipal units right now. I, I really think it's something that we should encourage and something that we should really look at and I know today's a presentation, we don't make any decisions as such on presentations and I don't know what our next step would be and I'm gonna ask that to the CAO. We have a presentation's been made, they have recommendations, the thoughts, they're not asking us for money, I understand at this point in time, they're planning on doing it, they'd like to do it. The only request is, is that we may be a hunk of land that we're involved in, which may be Rotary Park is one of the designated sites. And the land on Bernard Street, Moody's Lane, is that ours Jeff or is that waterfront development?
That's on the waterfront, I believe it's where when Arthur Thurston was relocated from his house during the construction or during the demolition.
By IMP.
Reconstruction, he was placed there.
Okay, yeah.
That goes back before some of you.
The old marine ground?
Yes.
Yeah, that's that recent land opposite.
It's in between the two fish plants and it's almost flat, but it's kind of a slant.
Yeah, I'd have to look up the ownership. And as far as the, the Rotary, Rotary Park property, we have leased that to, to, to the Rotary Club. So if that was their intended use, I'd have to review their lease to see if there was any requirement for permission from us to be able to do that. But as, as Paul's pointed out, a, a small bylaw amendment to facilitate this, which I don't, I'm not sensing would be an issue around the table, so, you know, we can check into the ownership of the Water Street property.
We're basically looking for somewhere permanent because we are going to be either having people invest large amounts of money in equipment, yes, it is movable, but, and then again, Water Street could become a commercial property that somebody may want and in the future, you may wanna sell it and it really pays. We're kinda looking for a permanent home.
Okay.
And it is tourism because a lot of people are traveling with their dogs and if you have your dog kennelled on, on the boat.
You're gonna.
For 12 hours, it's gonna have a place to pee.
Yeah, and that's the thing too Paul, is I was gonna bring up that point, is it'd be a great low, I, I actually like the Rotary Park one, not because of the cost, but because of the location, because of how it's already graded, it's everything there, there's lots of parking there and actually, and the one down below is, you're right, there could be a commercial aspect one of these days and the other thing is, is people getting off the boat. But I gotta ask you another question and it's got a little bit to do with, with dog control. What do you think, or what's your view and Tanya's view on, we have functions and we have Frank here now, we have Canada Day celebrations and we have people that bring dogs in off-leash on public property like wharfs, and we have a lot of people around. That shouldn't be, right?
It's against your bylaw currently.
Off.
Off-leash is against your bylaw.
Off-leash is against the bylaw, but also, you're not gonna be able to control your dog if it's off-leash into a large area with, with a public place and you have many kids and people around, so I have two dogs and I would never take them down there off-leash.
But, and the other thing is, the other point I have is, is I've seen numerous situations down there and I had comments, when we've had fireworks down there and you know you have in excess of four, five, six thousand people on the waterfront, you're there at nighttime, even if you have a large animal on leash, the safety aspect of people tripping over a leash, a dog getting kinda out a little bit.
I live on Home Street and my dog is terrified of fireworks.
Yeah.
Fire, first one went off this summer.
Yeah.
He's in the house, underneath my bed and he's under a pound.
They're terrified of.
And, and, and just going along and I know over the last couple of years, we've had a lot of comments and concerns about exactly what you're talking about, about in the park and I'm 100% for it and if the location is gonna be Rotary Park or the other one, I actually like them better than the one at the hospital because there's a lot of logistics there, going through the, the foundation if they, if they're ever gonna be, because they sold the, they sold the Title View Manor on the back part, so there could be some implications there if they wanna do something or expand, so.
And the heliport.
And the heliport, yeah, but either one of those other two locations, I've, I have no problem with that and we.
One of our things for fundraising was going to be partnering with.
And the other thing is Paul, like you said earlier, is if you get set up in a location, you don't wanna be able to move it in, you know, three years because something happens.
Well, we're looking at finding local businesses to help us put out a brochure that can be put on Nova Star for anybody traveling with a pet, let them know where the location is, let them know where the pet stores are and then they could go stay there.
Yeah, even, 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 even in the far end of town, you're still only, you know, four or five minutes away, so it's not, you know, if you're traveling with a car.
And it would take them right through Main Street, see all the businesses.
Yeah, yeah. And I think I get the same question as Counselor Landry, where do we just go from here, that's all.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, I think we kind of are answering our question because, listening to Counselor Mackay-Sick, the Water Street location, although personally I like it because it's proximity to the ferry, the long-term is one area we have to look at very seriously because it's a valuable piece of property and that's a property that we definitely want to keep in our, in our queue, shall we say, for development, especially with the excitement in the offshore. The hospital is out of the way and there causes some issues, there's parking concerns, so Rotary Park seems to be the favorite site, or at least somewhere to consider. Rotary Park is quite a large area, it's, it's a park, I've, like Counselor Mooney and I, over the past six months have been doing extensive walking and I know you do your walk, Phil, every day and I do my walk, I've yet to see a living being in Rotary Park, I'll be honest. I have been walking by that park for five years and I've yet to see any human being in there or dog, I see a deer occasionally going, "Hey Jim McClout, while I'm talking human beings." Not, not, not an immortal one Jim. But, but the reality, there's not a lot of use of that park, I mean, even if we could look at a hunk of that park, you know what I mean, keep, and that's.
We're not looking at disturbing anything that's there.
No.
We're looking at going in behind the gazebo.
There's actually enough land there to go behind the gazebo and have a decent-sized park.
And that's something we, you know, is, so, I don't know, is it, is it in order at this point to, I'd like to kind of maybe just put it on the books that make a motion, recommend to council that we direct staff to investigate the feasibility, and Jeff can throw me out on this one if it's not practical, investigate the feasibility of allocating a portion of Rotary Park to be used as a dog park within the town of Yarmouth and to advise council the steps that are needed to achieve this goal.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Dennis.
I think Jeff has to talk.
Go ahead.
Just on that, you know, if council's generally in favor of that site, as I said, we've leased it to a third party. If they're dealing with the third party, which I understand you've made a presentation to the Rotary Club, they're considering it.
They made a presentation to them, they, during that presentation, they expressed that they didn't know if they could do it or not because you were the landowners.
Right, so if, if there was a general feeling at this table that we were agreeable to the concept, you could take that back to them. And in, in my mind, counsel, if, if those two parties agree and we have no objection, it's, it's that simple.
And there'd be no problems?
It's fine.
No problem with the name being kept as Rotary Park?
We have no intention of changing the name for Rotary Park.
We've mentioned to a few people that we wanted to look at Rotary Park and a lot of people ask me, where's Rotary Park and what is it? So really, we're not trying to take away, we're trying to optimize the area and let people know that Rotary Park is there. We're not, we don't wanna take away from them at all.
Good. Okay, Counselor Dennis?
Just the rules for the park, I was just wondering, is this just going to be like a walking park or are you actually gonna have activities there like agility training, dog shows, whatever?
That, that is the possibility, we are, we have said to many people that you can't vote the park. That being said, should the local SPCA have their park in the park every September, that would be a prime location to be able to do that. And if we had control over that piece of land, which, yes, we kinda have control over Kemp Street, but no we don't.
Right.
There's a large argument between the dog owners and the kids and the parents in the neighborhood and Yakro, who every Wednesday night they have their ballgame, we realize that, so we scheduled to go with our dogs after the ballgame, even though it's not ballpark anymore.
I, I guess.
We're trying to work with the community and, yes, that's, that is one of the things that we would like to do, but it would have to be for a nonprofit purpose. If you want to do it for, say, donating food to the food bank for animals as a cost, I could see that working, but not as renting it out, charging a fee for what you're doing.
I guess I was just looking at some of the rules, like for instance, no food or treats for the dogs.
Yes.
When you're doing agility training or anything, of course, you treat your dogs, so I was just wondering how that would work, so.
My understanding with the agility people is, due to their insurance restrictions, they can't take their equipment out from wherever they are.
Okay.
Now, they could plan to do it, but we would have to make arrangements to have storage of their equipment on-site. Because I have spoken to the agility people before about doing a demonstration at, say, Park in the Park and it's, no, we can't do that, there are insurance restrictions, we're not allowed to, to move our equipment. It is, we want it to be as open as possible for everybody that wants to use it.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, thank you very much for coming. Yes, go ahead.
Your Worship, just a quick question on that motion, so, so Paul, the idea here is, is that I think the consensus is that we're in agreement with Rotary and good luck in your quest.
Okay, we're still waiting to hear back from them.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe, and Jeff is in tune with them as well.
Okay, Mike Randall, welcome Mike, so, how do we do this, just? Let me read what I say. Sorry. CAO, go ahead.
Yeah, so at the, at the August council meeting, a, a motion that had come forward from the last committee of the whole meeting, that we invite Mr. Randall to come to the next meeting to discuss real estate sales and suggestions, we may have to develop a strategy for effective marketing of the town's real estate. Mr. Randall's experience, and it does represent the town, town's interest in sale of, of all the properties we have for sale, there may be some aspects, in terms of general terms, I think it's fine to talk here, but if we're going to talk about sales strategy on specific properties, or we might want to consider that in camera, just from the perspective that if he's going to give us advice on, on our end of the deal, I'm not sure that doing it in the public forum is, is necessarily in our best interest, if you get what I'm saying. It's, if, we're setting up a strategy for our negotiation with future potential buyers, so I'm just giving you that.
Okay, Counselor Langel, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, your worship, there's one that kind of brought that up, I agree with CAO, I think it's something that would be nice that we maybe could do in camera at this point, I mean, there's some stuff we could discuss in the public forum, but where we are looking at strategy, I think our idea is to try to move these properties efficiently, effectively, and quickly, so I would have no qualms, the only thing is, we would, other items on the agenda, I'm wondering, this could take a few minutes, and for the benefit of the audience, could we maybe do the few remaining items, if they don't look too major, or are they...
Are you okay with that, or only because, I mean, you've been sitting here for an hour, you're, you're all right? Got your cell phones on your hip in case there's a sale?
Probably sold to properties.
Exactly, okay, we will-
So one to a player.
Exactly.
So, so Pam, could maybe we say a quarter to three for Mike, because we have to be done for three, right, so we do our business till a quarter to three, and then...
We could, we could do that, we might even be faster, so, unless you need to leave.
Yeah.
You're good, okay, let, let's do this then, okay, Heritage Day is, is relatively easy, I just received this email about Heritage Day 2015, and their request is that an appropriate celebration recognizing the heritage of the town of Yarmouth be, that they're encouraging this, so my suggestion is to pass it on to the Heritage Committee, because that's okay? Good, moved, I got a second, moved and seconded, discussion, question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, downtown music policy outline, CAO, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, I had circulate an email which is attached here, the end of July, concerning the, the meeting we had with the committee that gave us advice on downtown music, and is sort of looking after it now, these are the guidelines they suggested, haven't formalized it into a policy, because I was looking for feedback from council before doing so, if you're in general agreement with these, these guidelines, we'll, we'll prepare a policy document for your consideration at the council meeting.
Counselor McIsaac?
Yes, thank you, your worship, the committee, it's kind of, I'm kind of at loss here, I know, at one meeting, we formed a committee, we, we never did meet, myself, Ken Langel, and somebody else, I forget who it was, for the, yeah.
For downtown?
Yeah, for the downtown, yeah, yeah, motion by council, and so when I, when I read, what I had read, I'm, I'm saying, hmm, we must have missed that meeting, for whatever reason, we wasn't invited, when we were supposed to strike, we had to strike the committee, but we never did meet, it was for, we were supposed to meet sometime in July, whatever it was, but we didn't, due to whatever, whatever circumstances, so...
Okay, let him miss.
So anyway, uh...
Do you want that answered first?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll take responsibility for that, if that's what the motion said, but my, my recollection was that it was just direction to staff to call together some people, I didn't recollect the specific names being named, so if, if I missed that, I apologize for that.
Well, no, maybe one of us could, could be mistaken.
In a way, there was a meeting of, I guess, the group that was, yeah, sorry.
Okay, continue.
But no, it's just that, the outcome is not what I would really have liked, I guess, in what your report says, I, I would have liked to seen something a lot more drastic, like maybe a different period of time, because when, when this first came, came to light about music being played, it was only supposed to be played for the month of December, that's all it was supposed to be, then somebody in their wisdom took it upon themselves to continue playing the music, and the music is still being played, without coming before council or anything, they'd done it on their own, and so here's where we are today, and even at the committee, at the, at the committee meeting of the waterfront development, there was lots of concerns that this was going to happen, and it did happen, and it, it did happen, there was four, there's a half a dozen or more people voiced their opinions, and, and it wasn't in favor of 365 days a year of music, and not, and, and in different musics, and what, what we've been seeing in the paper, and emails, and all this other stuff, th, these people are absolutely right, a, and it was suggested even around the table at the time, at the waterfront development meeting, of the different kinds of music, you're not going to please everybody and anybody, and you're not going to do it, no matter how many committees you strike, if, if you was to turn it off today, I would be more interested to see how many complaints you got because the music's off, I don't think you'd have that many. So my, my outlook on this whole thing is, it, it was a mess right from the get-go, we asked for a price, council asked for a price, and in their haste, in November and December, bang, we were in it for seventeen, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, and it wanted up and running and going, and here's where we are today, we, we, we've got a system that's playing 365 days a year, I've had more people stop and complain to me about it, and, you know, I try to avoid walking down Main Street as much as I can, in, in the downtown core, where the music's playing, because really, sometimes it's so loud, even driving downtown, you have to roll your window up, you walk, you, you, I'm serious, last week, last week, and the week before was unbearable, in the morning, early in the morning, and in the afternoon, it was terrible, when I go for walks, I don't walk up Main Street, that's what I mean, try to avoid it, I get on Water Street, only time I come in is when I have to go to the city drugstore or something like that, that's about it. But anyway, to the point is that these problems were foreseen, and they've come to fruition, and the committee that was supposed to be struck was never, never did meet, but you, you formed another committee, and you met, and you came with some recommendations, but anyway, I'm not in favor of the recommendations, there's got to be, there's got to be a different solution to this.
Counselor Langel?
Recalling the discussion that we had with, further to Counselor McIsaac, I think the intention was, is that if some of us wanted to sit in on the meeting, because we've been receiving so many complaints off and on, I think the, that was the intent, I was too, like Counselor McIsaac, a little puzzled, I guess is the word, that I didn't, I knew, found that this committee existed, and it happened, and it met, and it was over and done with, because we're unfortunately fielding the calls, it, it, it's a no-win situation, the music downtown, we, we've created a beast, and the beast is there, I can go to a store owner who says they absolutely love it, and the one next door absolutely hates it, and it's all in taste, I mean, some people like A music, and other people like B music, and other people like C music, it's a taste issue, I do know that in Counselor McIsaac's comment, the original intent is that it wouldn't be playing seven days a week, whatever the hours are, that we would be using it as a seasonal thing, with some quiet time happening in between, and it does seem to be a little inconsistent, and there are bugs in the system, and I think that was the big understanding to help with the creation of this policy, and since many of us have been fielding a lot of heat on this, I really think in fairness, it would be nice, if we could have some input into this policy before it comes before the table, and then here we are, doing our thing, and we have to reinvent the wheel in the room here, so, that's just my ten cent.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, if I could jump in with my, where is my edition, 10F?
Go ahead.
Didn't know, didn't know that this was on, so it's-
Yeah, go ahead, though.
Um, in, in response to the last couple of few emails, passionate emails about music on the street, I, I walked the street on, on Tuesday, and I besides speaking with a number of two downtown residents, like, two residents that live on, on Main Street, and a number of customers, I went into thirty-three businesses up and down Main Street, from speaker to speaker on both sides, and a number of them gave multiple, multiple input, what it all boils down to is, I'm sorry, Sandy's Gifts, I did not poll you, I didn't think that would be too fair. There were, out of thirty-three businesses, and seven residents and, and customers, I got two get rid of it, twelve that liked it, nine that said, oh, yeah, it's okay, ten absolutely love it, five said, please, just year-round, seasonal, three people absolutely despise it, twenty-four said that the music was just too repetitious, the loop is too short, two people said it was too loud, but they understand that it is, it's, it's technical, it's in the recording of each song, it's just like commercials and, and TV programs, one said, ah, not too crazy about the type of music, ah, you got anywhere from intermittent, some suggestions were to have intermittent quiet zones along Main Street, keep it in Frost Park and, and Elma Square, but they still love it, if I hear that same Anne Murray song one more time, there was one, one suggestion to add some light classical music to the list, some loved the Nova Scotia local Acadian content, but you cannot please everyone, and there was one shopper who had never experienced music being piped in a, in a town, or in a, in a commercial district before, and he thought it was just the greatest idea, first time he'd ever experienced it, and he loved it, so the vast majority, and I can share all this with everyone, I only made two copies right now, all in all, you can't, you can't keep everyone happy, but apparently, from speaking with people face to face, we're keeping more than the majority of them happy, they like it, so, that's, that's my 10F edition, thank you very much.
Counselor Dennis?
Yeah, I just want to say, the thing about the music and the loudness of the music, is because, too, all day long with the traffic going, it's really busy, so you don't hear the music as well, but soon as that traffic dies off, then the music is louder, and also, yes, a lot of the complaints, if, like, any complaints, are mostly about the repetition of the songs, so I feel that we need a longer playlist, that hopefully, if it's long enough, that you don't hear that repeat at all, so if we could just have a long playlist that just goes the whole eight hours, or twelve hours, whatever, that you don't hear repeat songs.
Just a, a general comment, when the music was introduced last Christmas, and is carried on through the year, it's interesting that that issue has touched the emotions of a lot of citizens and merchants in the area of Yarmouth downtown, I didn't know music could be, I thought music was supposed to be relaxing, comforting, and whatever, and at various times, I copied the, most of the emails that take place, and at various times, I thought to myself, well, let's just discontinue the music forever, you know, we just, it just makes it discouraging to, to know that music is upsetting to apparently a, a lot of people in our area, but having said that out loud, I'll concur with Sandy that, that we can, should carry on with it, and have the committee meet and discuss, I can see turning the music off at eight o'clock in the evening, I agree with her that the music is louder in the evening because of what, there's less traffic, less people, less car traffic, but I'm sorry that, you know, at the end of the day, that music has become such a, an emotional issue for so many people, or seemingly a number of people, not many, maybe as Counselor Dawes has pointed out, Madeline has shown us, that a natural discussion with people, that the majority of people like the music, and just comments really, sometimes I'm, I feel discouraged about the moment, and, and other times, I think it's a, but for the most part, I think the music is a good thing, thank you very much.
Anything we have to do with that? Any lead directions? Go ahead, CAO.
Well, clearly, some of the members of council would like to have more, more discussion, and a discussion with the, with the committee, so, I mean, there's a few ways we can go from here, but I would suggest that maybe, maybe let's, let's try again, let's convene another meeting, let's get council there, and get a few people who've been involved thus far, and talk about policy alternatives, and, and see if we can reach a consensus, or at least get, get some direction that can come back to council, I don't see any point in, in, unless, unless a motion is made, and it's, and a direction is given, I don't see any point in, in me going away and, and refining the document as is, it seems that we need to discuss it more to, to be satisfied with it, so, and I don't think that's a bad thing at all, so, we can have another meeting, and do it at a time, and, and make sure that the right, the right people are invited, yourselves most particularly, and have that discussion.
Did you want to, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, and I, I hear the deputy mayor and, and Jim, I know you've, it's, it is an unfortunate issue, I'm a great supporter of the music, the, I think the concern is, is the message has been kind of lost as to what the intent was with the music, we were looking more at a seasonal theme, at least this was the cell job that I kind of was, was, was impressed with, in other words, we would be focusing at the Christmas period, and then maybe after Christmas, we'd have quiet time, and then we would re-bring it up again, you know, at seasonal times, the loop is definitely too small, but I mean, we also got to bear in mind that we have volunteers who have put a lot of time and effort into this, and I don't want to diminish the fact that it's, it's not an easy thing to find volunteers nowadays, and I commend them for what they've done, I, I think the difficulty is that maybe direction isn't there, the, the comments I'm getting from merchants, and I have, like Counselor Dawes, met with many along Main Street, I'm on Main Street every day, has been, the type of music seems to be the, the problem, and it's one of those issues that it's an individual taste thing, where I may enjoy a night wish in Luca Terilli, and my colleague to my right may enjoy a, a good opera, where my colleague to the left may like country and western, you know what I mean, it's a personal taste, so we almost have got to figure out a way that we can appeal to people, I'm disappointed personally that during the summer months with tourism, that we don't have Nova Scotia and maritime flair, and I know, I've seen some of the correspondence, that people don't like that, well, the people who don't like that, I suggest, would be the merchants and the downtown people, but we are catering to our tourists, and a lot of tourists find that quote quaint, unquote, you know what I mean, and I mean, I can remember my time with Mr. Leonard's, we used to play these dreadful songs over and over and over, and it was painful, I mean, I went home and I was having nightmare with Stan Rogers, you know, at night, but on the other hand, the tourists absolutely loved it, because it was a maritime flavor, so, and we have to decide if we're a tourist town, we also have to be consistent, here we have musics, used to have it on Sunday morning, and not a bloody store open, you know, so you can't pretty well have a festive downtown with music playing if there's no stores open to accompany the music, on the other hand, you, you should be working with the store hours, in my opinion, and that's something that we have to address as well, so, there are things, and I think this is some of the input that I would like to have an opportunity to the committee and say, hey, you know, we're doing this, we got to kind of focus on this, I think the other thing we got to look at as well, is we do have some people who live downtown, we do have some actual apartments in the downtown core, there's not a lot of them, but there are some of them, and I know if I was living in one of those apartments, and music started blaring on a Sunday morning at nine o'clock, you know, next to my place, I wouldn't be too happy, you know what I mean, I think we need to look at our times a little bit, and that's where a good frank discussion with the, with the, there's a, there's basically a committee that controls the music, and I think we just need to have input to that committee.
But that, and that's, that's what you just, that's what you just said.
Yeah, and that's what we need, if we can have that, that's, I think that's all we were asking for, is to have an opportunity to speak with this committee, and, and not to be-
So, so that's what we'll do, I, I guess my only fear is that, and I say this respectfully, when you, when you react to one or two strong emails, you really have to do what Counselor Dawes did, and tap into the rest of the community, and, and keep it in mind-
the rest of the community and, and keep it in mind that it is for the tourists and it is for the shoppers and stuff. So, we'll set up that meeting and, and we'll move on. Okay, good. Portable asphalt recycling machine tender. Go ahead, CAO.
Hey, so, a, we did a request for tenders for a asphalt recycler, and two tenders were received as outlined in the engineer's memo, and after reviewing the tenders and after making a site visit to view the used unit, to ensure it's fully operational, it's recommended that the contract be awarded to Transfield Dexter Gateway Services Limited in the amount of $38,000 plus HST. The approved budget was $85,000, so we're well within that, and so, as you can see in Mr. Ernst's memo, the unit that we would be purchasing or recommending to purchase has just 213 hours of, of use on it. It has been inspected to, to ensure that it would meet our needs, and so that's the recommendation.
Go ahead.
Maybe I'm missing something, but the only memos I have from Mr. Ernst is for the tender on Green Street Sewer Separation dated September the third and the tender for Yarmouth Fire Hall September, oh, it's online now, I'm so used to getting them in my.
I've got this, do you want to see this?
No, no, I can go online and see it, I didn't realize it was online, sorry.
Yeah. Yep, go ahead, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that the contract for the portable asphalt recycling machine be awarded to Transfield Dexter Gateways Limited in the amount of $38,000 plus HST, as per the engineer's recommendation.
Okay. Someone second that? Deputy seconded. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Correspondents for action? Do we need to? Certainly, yep, go ahead, CAO.
On that item, can I, can I ask that we refer that to the Recreation Committee for a recommendation back from them formally?
For this here? Okay. Okay.
Back.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Mariner Center mural, mural project. CAO.
Your worship, the memo from the manager is indicating that we're looking to, to create the world's largest indoor mural, and he's offering a special discount rate and a suggestion that the members of council be, be properly seated within the mural, and so if it is, if you, if it is your wish to do that, and I think it's an interesting idea, then what it would require is, you know, obviously either a photo of, of yourselves to, to have the artist work from and, and then we can talk about positioning within the, within the mural, if you want to all sit together.[806.13][806.13](laughing) Hold hands and all that. Anyway, that's his recommendation, I think it's a neat idea, and at $50 per person, it would immortalize you in the, in perhaps the world's largest indoor mural.
So, the idea is that we would pay $50, would you mind?
Counselor Dennis?
Oh. That was my question, but I, I think that we should all pay ourselves if we want to be into it, I don't think it should be a town thing.
Go ahead, I'm.
That, that was my, that was my question I was going to ask also. If we, we're going to be in it, I prefer to pay, pay myself to be in there. If it's $50 or not, or $90, whatever it is, I'll pay it myself.
Counselor Lando?
Whatever they want, we'll give them.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that we encourage all counselors to participate in the mural project with the intent that if we so wish that, maybe, I don't know whether it's, it's an issue if $50 would be deducted from our next stipend check in accordance with that.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Nay. All right, motion carried, I think it was carried. How many nays? Three? Four? That's carried, three nays. Yeah, it's, it's gone through, but I mean, it doesn't mean you have to.
Yeah. Your worship, and further, since Counselor Mooney has lost the equivalent of me, and I have taken off numbers, wondering if we could maybe also send more updated pictures? We were somewhat rotund in the, on our website right now, and we'd like to be more reflective of our new image.
How about, I'm your lost and found department, so no.[915.13][915.13](laughing) We could probably do that after, it's halfway, if we wanted to do that, it wouldn't be a big, Counselor McIsaac?
So, let me get this straight.[931.01][931.01](laughing) Is there going to be a portrait taken, or are we going to just go with the, the council's pictures that were taken, or?
For the Mariner Center?
Yeah, for the Mariner Center.
I believe the answer is, if you want your face to be immortalized, pay the money and go do it.
Okay, so that's, that's what it is. We, we pay our own?
Yes.
But he made, he just made a motion to have it deducted off our stipend?
Yeah.
But you can pay it cash if you want.
Yes, you're still paying it yourself, though, that's still coming up.
We're not going to take it off.
Okay, well, no, it doesn't make any difference, I'm just going to pay it, pay it myself. So, i- is there a timeline on this?
(inaudible).
Okay, thank you.
But, but just so we're clear, just because the motion went through doesn't mean, doesn't mean you have to go do it. Okay? It's all volunteer. All right. Are we in the middle of any motions that didn't get passed? Except for that picture of me with your lost and found pounds. Okay. Okay, we're good to go. Mayor Center, okay, uh, no, we're not good. Okay, ten A. Motionary EMO Coordinator Presentation to Counselor Dawes.
Ah, thank you, your worship. To direct staff? Sorry?
Go ahead. To direct staff to invite EMO Coordinator Harold Richardson to make a presentation to council during a public information meeting at next month's council meeting to explain what the role of the EMO is for council and the public. That is my condensed motion. If anyone would second it, I will speak further to it. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Thank you. I just want to be very clear about something with respect to last month's post-tropical storm, or was it pre, pop, last, last month's post-tropical storm Arthur and the many phone calls and questions from town residents. People did not know what to do or where to call to get answers. I did not appreciate hearing from other people about Counselor Mooney twisting my words while I left council chambers during the last council meeting. The majority around this table is experienced and familiar with procedures and definitions, the rest of us are not. As a counselor, I'm merely asking to assert some clarity for the citizens of the town, not point fingers. The people of Yarmouth, they want and they need to know. They don't know what constitutes an emergency, EMO does know that. The guidelines, they are written down somewhere, but the public are not aware, and that needs to be, that needs to be put out there. We all got phone calls, maybe we all didn't, maybe I was the only one, and there are lights blinking, so I will step aside for those.
Good. Counselor Lando, go ahead.
It's a curious motion, you know, and again, to the CAO, and I know the CAO is our only employee and all other employees work directly with him so he can hire and fire them, including Mr. Beck, who just walked in the room.[1140.76][1140.76](laughing)
No, you sit down, you're not going anywhere, you're good to go.
I had to put some humor in there.
We've got to get through this.
But there's nothing stopping Counselor Dawes from contacting Mr. Richardson, to understand, if any, I mean, I know if I have a concern with any of our direct people, i.e. the fire department or fire chief and all that, I usually just give them a call and get updated. I, I think the counselor's points, well, I'm very content with what I know about EMO, and I, I hear what she's saying with regard to lack of knowledge, but maybe that could be a session that could be done just for a volunteer, rather than doing a presentation to council, rather, it could be just an information session, a little meeting with, with Harold directly, and anybody who wants to come can come and sit down with Harold and get a full explanation of what's going on. I just hate to see it, we've got such long agendas, especially with me talking so much, that, you know, ten minutes for something that many of us are aware of, I don't know if that's time well spent.
Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. And Counselor McIsaac and yourself are sitting on EMO with myself, as I serve as Chair of the Emergency Measures Organization for, for the municipality and the town of Yarmouth, and she can take exception to what she said, and I know what she said last meeting, she said that the EMO didn't do their job, but we do have a debriefing session. I will support her motion, we can have Harold come in to clarify what the role is as EMO for the community and for, for what they deem or not deem as an emergency, but we do have a debriefing session on, on the post-tropical storm Arthur in the next, is it October, Counselor?
October.
October, and Harold, that, that meeting will be dedicated to the debriefing of her post-tropical storm Arthur, and I invite the council to come in and see the steps that Mr. Richardson and the EMO committee and his, his vast array of people, the radio people and all the other ones, what they did through, what they did on that day and the day before and the day after, so, she's more than welcome to attend, but I will support the motion, but I will stand by my comments of last meeting.
Okay, good, so the motion's on the floor. Call for the question? Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Green Street Sewer.
Can I very, just, just for a moment, address this?
Yeah.
You stand by your comments, Counselor Mooney, what, what did I, what did I do wrong? I did not attack Mr. Richardson's personal integrity, his professionalism? Yes, you did.
No, no, EMO, I think, yeah.
Yes, you did.
I wish they could do the same.
Yeah.
That's exa, I agree, and that's exactly where that should have taken place last, at the last meeting. Thank you.
Green Street Sewer Separation Tender Results.
Thank you, your worship. Request for tenders was awarded, advertised provincial procurement site for the separation of sanitary sewer, installation of storm sewer, and installation of a new water line on Green Street from Southeast Street to Aragau Street with a closing date of August 27th. Only one tender was received, and the results are outlined in the engineer's memo. The approved budget for the sanitary, sanitary slash storm sewer separation was $150,000, and for water line installation was $150,000. After reviewing the tenders, it is recommended that we award the tender to Aberdeen Paving in the amount of $420,302 plus HST, including a contingency of $35,000. The water main installation will be allocated to the water utility in the amount of $219,660 plus HST, and the contingency allowance obviously would only be spent as needed, so that is for your consideration.
Go ahead, I'm going to ask.
Thank you, your worship. My question would be to Dave. Dave, does this fall in line? I, I know it says the recommendation here, but does this, the figures look right to you, was only one tender?
I think it's reasonable, yes.
You, you think it's reasonable?
Yeah.
That's all I need, then. Thank you.
So, so I have a question, in, in process, because I would have asked the same thing Counselor asked, when you're not happy, do you go out again? If, if this would have been way off base, would you have gone out again? You know what I mean? Yeah.
We wouldn't probably do it.
What's that?
I said, we probably would not do it.
Okay, that's what, okay. All right. So, was the motion made? Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship.
I will make that motion that we accept the, the tender as presented to, from the engineer, Dave Ernst.
Okay. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. Those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Yarmouth Fire Hall Tender Results. CAO.
Thank you, your worship. Invited tenders were requested from four local contractors for the installation of new siding windows and doors at the Yarmouth Fire Hall, 221 Pleasant Street, with a closing date of August 22nd this year. Two responses were received from local contractors with the results summarized in the town engineer's memo. After reviewing the tenders and in order to reduce the cost, the installation of underground rigid insulation was eliminated from the concrete foundation wall, which would include excavation, backfill and reinstatement. This would reduce the cost by $38,382 for the low tenderer. However, it is recommended that the main entrance system, complete with window above, be replaced at a cost of $14,400. The net cost would be $196,443 plus HST for the low tenderer. It is recommended the contract be awarded to Delmar Construction in the amount of $196,443 plus HST for your consideration.
Good.
Thank you, your worship, I just have a question. You can, you can second it afterwards, but just have a question for Dave. Dave, is this going to affect the overall construction or anything, the work that should have been done, the $38,000? Is there, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, what, what's, is, is it taking any, anything from that that should really be done? Because it seems that it takes lengthy, lengthy amounts of time to get things done out there, and the building is not in the best of shape, so by letting, not letting the 38,382, the work be done at that, is it the overall, big picture, is it something we should do or wait another three or four years? That's the question that I'm asking.
I had included it to insulate the foundation wall in an effort to try to reduce heat loss through the concrete wall.
I, I think that would have been, would have been a real good thing.
And that was taking the insulation down below grade.
I got you.
Yeah. That's, that's where all the excavation costs come from.
Yes.
In order to try to bring it in line with our, our budget figure, I reduced that by $38,000. However, however, the main entrance system was a provision item, and that probably should be done at this time, because the siding is going to be done as well, and I don't think you want to do that later, but.
No, so, but that, that's, that's in this now?
Yeah.
So, you're comfortable with not excluding this, this, at this time?
Yeah.
And that can be done at a later time? Did you have a cost figured out of the savings by doing that? How much it would save by, by fuel or energy?
No, not really, I'm not an energy expert, but.
Okay. Okay, great, then. Thank you, Dave.
Counselor Lando?
Yeah, well, $30,000 is a lot of fuel as well. My, my question is, again, we're spending a lot of money on the fire hall in the last few years. To the CAO, are we, I know we discussed this before, replacement of the structure, and it's been an issue. Do we have, or could we start maybe looking at a long-term plan for that building? Maybe I'm missing the boat, or maybe it exists, because every so many years, we're doing a little bit of this and a little bit of that, and a little bit of this and a little bit of that. The reality is, is we have a building that we keep diddle-dooing around, but I'm wondering if we're throwing good money after bed, that whether we should be looking at a five-year plan or a six-year plan for that building. We're spending a nice hunk of change right here today on the building, and we just spent a fair chunk of change on the building a few years back, and I'm curious if we should be looking at some kind of a contingency plan down the road.
CAO?
Yep. A few years ago, we, we actually engaged external engineers to do a complete assessment of the structure. What they identified is that there was somewhere in the area of a million dollars in deferred maintenance, and they looked at the, at the cost benefit analysis of replace versus renovate. And with the million dollars in deferred maintenance being addressed over time, they felt that it was a, it was a sound decision to go forward and make these investments. So, this, although it seems like, it may seem like little bits here and there adding up over the years, it's actually part of the plan. That is, that is part, these are, these are improvements that were recommended in that plan, and so it, it isn't, it isn't haphazard, it is in fact following the, the, I think it was Jake Switford did the, did the study.
I'd like to get a copy of that plan, if it could be sent as well, I'm just curious what the down, long-term plan is. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got that, too.
Counselor Dennis?
Have we ever looked into, since we need a new fire station, new police station, have we ever looked into a combination, fire station and police station together?
We used to have one, we had one, yeah.
CAO? Bless somebody.
No, we, we haven't looked into a combined one per se. Now, we, we did, as I said, back in, I think it was 2007, we had this study completed on the fire hall, which, which suggested that structure was fine and, and simply needed to have deferred maintenance addressed, and the. maintenance addressed. And the, with the police side of things, it's, in the, in the last few years, that was brought to our attention, and we found a, a suitable, um, alternative to a new building. In an existing building, we were able to pick up quite reasonably, and so the plan is underway to, to renovate that. In fact, that tender will go out this month, Dave? Is that?
Uh, a li, a little later in the fall, so we can carry it over to the next fiscal year.
So the renovation, the design work to do the renovations is all complete? The budget's in place to do that, bridging into next year? So the RCMP should be moving into that building maybe next summer? But no, we haven't looked at, we didn't step back and do a, a review of what would it mean to put them in, under the same roof?
Well, it's just the costs that it costs to keep redoing these old buildings. Wouldn't it be better just to build a brand-new one, combination?
Well, as I said, we, we're going to put a million dollars, if we catch up on all that deferred maintenance, a million dollars into the fire hall. Uh, the cost on Water Street for that building will be in the area of maybe half a million or so. Uh, the cost of a new fire hall alone, uh, when we looked into that, was three million dollars. So add to that the cost of the fire hall, or sorry, the police, uh, side of it, which, if you build a new police station, you're building it to federal standards. When we looked into that, or we talked about that with the RCMP, I'm gonna say it's eight or nine years ago. Uh, I mean, they, they made it quite clear that that would be a, a five-year process, and, uh, gave us the impression that that would be a very expensive way to go.
We don't have enough money.
Okay, just a thought.
Yeah, no, and, and I've seen, I've seen.
I don't have the answers, though.
No, what I've seen, uh, shared, shared service buildings that have involved, uh, police, fire, EMO, ambulance even, in, in other areas where, where the services are provided a little differently, but, and, and they, they do talk about some of the, some of the operational benefits of being co-located, because they work closely together on many situations.
Mm-hmm.
It's just that in, the way the circumstances have unfolded here, and the opportunities we've had, A, to, to, to renovate the building that we have for fire, and to take advantage of an opportunity on Water Street for the RCMP, it hasn't made that the most obvious way to go for us.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, this plan that Counselor Langel just asked for, is that going to be distributed to all of council? Yes, please? Yes?
We all do.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Counselor out for something, I assume it was everybody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Okay?
We share.
Uh, so, there's a motion to, I know, I know, we're way late. Motion to, uh.
Just got a question.
Go ahead, CAO, sorry.
Sorry, just on that, if you go to our town website, and on the front page, on the main menu, there's a reports item. If you go to that page, about two-thirds of the way down, there's a Jake Switford report, building condition assessment. It's available online. If you want to print a copy, we're happy to.
Just one quick question.
Just letting Linda know.
Counselor McIsaac?
Just one more quick question. Jeff, the last council that we had before this one, we went visiting fire stations. Did we not put a, a plan in place for five-to-seven year plan for a fire station? We, we didn't, we didn't say anything about looking at building one, or maybe it was just a, one of my election promises that I made and didn't keep?
No, no.
Your worship, I, I.
I, I hate to keep using the same one over and over.
I'll restrict my comments to the first part of your question. Okay. Uh, we did, we did go visit one fire station in Berwick, and, uh, they, they did a fantastic job there. Um, and it was, it was around that time, I believe, that we were, we were toying with, do we, do we build new or do we renovate? And, and in our case, the, the recommendation was to, to renovate the, the structure that we had. And, um, you know, if we were, if we were going to build, and I think, I think what was decided, and there is a motion in the, in, continues to show up in my report around, around clarifying the role of the committee, because there was, I think it was a motion of council to establish a committee, a building committee. And towards the end of the last council mandate, I heard a timeframe of ten years. And so there is, there's really no need to establish a committee to work for ten years to, to do a fire hall. So as we get closer to, you know, maybe the, that next critical milestone where we're either considering another significant investment into the fire hall to replace systems or whatnot, or, or, or new, then I think that's the time to, to think about the committee.
You good with that, Chief?
Good with that, yeah.
Good.
I was about to warm up, sir.
I just, I just put my head around, around the engineer, and I saw you sitting there. I said, "If I fail, go ahead."
And, and the five-to-seven year span was brought up by, uh, the fire chief in Berwick and Mayor John Prowl at the time, is they used the five-to-seven year span as what they did to develop their fire station and, uh, get the parameters from, I think they amalgamated some services in there, some other fire departments. Um, so that's what they used. Their timeline was five to seven years. They came up with their development of the plan.
So, do I have, can I have a motion to accept this tender?
I started, and, and Counselor Fatsy was gonna say. Well, you weren't one, I said. I'll second that.
Did you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Mooney. Discussion? First question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Minimum housing standard bylaw?
Good.
Very quickly, go ahead.
Our minimum housing standards bylaw was developed before the National Building Code was. And there is a requirement within our minimum housing standards bylaw for exiting that exceeds the requirements of the National Building Code. This was brought to my attention recently by our building inspector, and she has suggested that, uh, you know, the, the National Research Council does the National Building Code, and that their, their, uh, requirements for exiting, uh, for apartments is, is sufficient. Our bylaw makes it, uh, puts an extra onus on developers, and she's recently, this came on her radar because she was dealing with a developer who said, "Well, I'll develop, I'll develop outside of town because you're requiring more than the National Building Code does." So with that in mind, I'm looking for direction. I would, I would go back and create an amendment to our minimum housing standards bylaw to match the National Building Code with your direction.
Okay, moved by Counselor Langel, seconded by Counselor Dennis. Discussion? Questions been called. Oh, Counselor Dawes, go ahead.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna go with the majority. I'm fine, I'm fine with it to a certain point. Um, if I live in, in an apartment or anywhere where I only have one, one door in which I can enter and exit my dwelling, and if that door, for some reason or another, um, uh, is, is, is blocked, and I cannot, I can't get out of my apartment, then I would, I would be, I'd be very scared.
Well, then you better do something to remedy that before the fire happens.
You're right.
Right? Does that, is it?
Roll over.
No.
You're right.
Go ahead.
And, and that's, that's sort of the issue, is that the, the National Building Code, uh, requires a very specific exiting requirements for bedroom windows. So they have to be of certain size and so on, and accessibility, and they have to be easily operated, so that, so that, you know, you don't need to know anything particularly about that window to be able to, to, to exit. What our minimum housing standard bylaw requires is a second full exit to the outside, meaning a door. And, and so that is, that is an excessive requirement, when you compare that to what the National Research Council requires in, in apartments. Uh, so that is, that is what came to her attention, and from her perspective, unless there was a reason that we had that in there, uh, she's recommending that we, we have our standards consistent with the National Building Code. Um, and, and as she pointed out, ours predated the National Building Code, so, uh, our standard was not unreasonable. You know, in the day, it certainly provided for safe, safe housing, but the National Research Council deems a, a, an accessible, a, a window that you can pass through reasonably, that a person can get through in the case of emergency, as, as sufficient. And, uh, she thinks that's probably a standard we should adhere to.
I was, I, my only thought was, uh, I don't know, I'm either young and, and, uh, physically challenged, or I'm old and I'm physically challenged, and I can't jump out of, of, of my window. Um, that's, that's, that was my only thought. That was my only concern. That's all. As long as I'm, uh, young and able-bodied and I can get out of one door, as long as it's not obstructed, then I'm fine with it. That's all. It was just, it was just a thought. That's all.
No, but, but when you said that, my response was, "I hope anybody that has a door has an alternate way out." Right? They, they should have. So, so you're right to say that. And I probably sounded flip, but, but, but really, like, it's, it's hard to hold everybody's hand and, and say, right? It's a hard thing to do. So, so that motion is on the floor? Were we ready? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Nay.
One nay. And then the patching was taken care of? And Counselor Dawes, your music was taken care of?
Yes, thank you.
And I, I want to, a motion to adjourn.
Why are you putting your camera down?
Well, maybe we should do, let's, let's do these, get these tenders done in a council meeting. Take the, twenty seconds.
Yeah.
Okay? Motion to adjourn?
So.
Okay, so now we're going into council meeting. Do I have to do all this call to order?
Call to order.
Call to order, record of attendance. Everybody's in order. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Can I have approval of the agenda, which is simply to a, to it, no additions allowed? I'm gonna tell you right now. Okay, so we are looking for motions to approve the tenders, so our engineer can get on that, because I know he has nothing else to do. CAO, do you wanna start us off, if you don't mind? Thank you.
Not at all. Um, okay, so let's, uh, let's deal first with the, um, well, you have three recommendations coming from the committee of the whole earlier this afternoon. Uh, you can deal with those three recommendations as one motion, if you like.
Okay.
To ratify the, the three recommendations of, of committee of the whole concerning tenders. That's permissible.
Second.
Okay.
Greg, that's permissible?
Yeah.
Question?
Does that gonna cost us a cookie?
It just costs us a cookie, right?
Costs us a cookie. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Uh, motion to go in camera?
Go.
Okay. Mr. Beck, we need to go in camera for a few minutes. Uh, if we can get you a coffee or something while you're waiting, we don't, we're a couple minutes late.
No, that's fine.
Three, we'll go, we'll aim for three-thirty at.
That's okay.
Okay, and just, just knock on that door if you want a coffee or some, or my office is right there, if you want to sit down and take care of some paperwork of mine.